Hello there Harlan Dill teachers and staff. Welcome back to the 2020-2021 school year. I'm here to say welcome back. We are eternally grateful for everything that you've done during this COVID-19 crisis. We are so grateful for the love, the dedication, and the creativity that you have shown, not only for the love of your profession, but for the love of your students. You have maintained focused and diligent on children's outcomes, students' education, and for that, we couldn't be happier. We're trying to keep everybody safe. We're doing the best we can with the guidelines that we are being given by TA and the state of the governor's office. We're going to keep not only the students safe, you, the teachers, the staff, the entire Harlan Dill community. You are the true gems in our district. Please don't ever forget that. You are the driving force behind each successful child. There is no child more or less worthy than another. Success for one is success for all. Good luck in this new year, and let's all be safe and remain healthy.
Welcome back to the 2021 school year. Who would have envisioned when we left for spring break in 2020 that any of this would be our reality? Well, it is. As we embark in a new year and a new beginning, I would like to remind everyone that great things were taking place at Harlan Dill Independent School District. We had just wrapped up our Heff Employee Contribution Scholarship Drive that yielded the best contribution ever at over $64,000. Each dollar is matched by an anonymous donor that has a huge heart for Harlan Dill Independent School District. These funds go directly to every graduating senior that attends a higher ed institute. We can go on and on on the great things that we accomplished last year, but you know as well as I do, times are different. As educators, we were thrown a curveball in the spring of 2020. We all had our own reactions to this pandemic. Fast forward to today, the present, six months later, and we have more questions and answers. When we look to the future, August 24th, the first day of school, so much has changed. But as always, as educators, we adjust. We take the bull by the horns and we make great things happen for our students. Our students, our children, they deserve the very best education possible, albeit remote or in person. I'll give you a quote, a quote from Maya Angelou. "Nothing will work unless you do." We are a new frontier of education. We will always adjust, adapt, and conquer any hurdle that is thrown our way because that is what we always have done as educators. With that being said, our guest speaker will transcend and give us a new perspective on how to face our challenges. Have a wonderful 2021 school year. Remember, stronger together, closer than ever. And now I introduce you, Ms. Valentine.
It was during the most difficult time in my life, a tragic time where in an instant, my life as I knew it was forever changed. And I faced what seemed to be the impossible. It was a time that I looked for ways to stay inspired, to get motivated, to continue to fight. And I remember reading this quote, "It always seems impossible until it's done." And those words resonated with me. They planted a seed in me that I could overcome and endure what I was facing. And that in life, there are always more opportunities to view things as more possible than impossible if we choose to do so. And that becomes the difficult part for many, making that choice. Well, I stand before all of you today because I made that choice to believe in what was possible, to prove what was possible. And today, I would like to take you all on an empowering journey, one that I call Mission Possible. As I share my insight from over 30 years as an educator, from teacher to assistant principal, to principal to executive director. And I will also sprinkle in a huge dose of inspiration from my powerful story and journey that life has taken me on. I am so delighted to be here with all of you today and to share this message. On the screen, I have also put my Twitter handle. I'm so excited that I finally learned what that was called. If I say something today that is something you feel someone else could benefit from, please feel free, if you are a Twitter user, to please tweet that out. I'm delighted to be able to share with you this message. I always begin with this, and that is that I believe that I've been so successful at doing everything I wanted to do in life because I always stayed connected to my purpose in life, what I like to call my why. And I know that when times got tough for me, that when I felt overwhelmed or anxious, that it was usually I lost my way because I lost my why. And as long as I remembered and reflected back upon my purpose in life, somehow I always managed to come through and come through in a very big way. And so today, I want to ask us, have we ever sat for a moment just to think about what is our purpose in life? And do we stay connected to that purpose? Do your daily actions and words actually align with what you said you wanted to do in life and what you were called to do in life? I know I always wanted to be an educator. It's who I am, it's who I will always be. And as long as I stay connected to that and I remember that I'm here because I want to ensure the success of every student, every day, then I know for a fact that what I do on this journey as an educator will always have meaning in the lives of the most important people to me, the students. And today, I'm going to remind you of your why, to help you to see that you should never lose sight of why you do what you do and how important that why is to carry you through the tough times that may lie ahead. But we're always ready educators. We're the most resilient people in the world. And today, I'm going to remind you of that, your why. This is me, Marlena Valentine. It is on my first day as an elementary school principal, August of 2005. My school was a pre-K to fifth grade school. It was located right outside of New Orleans, Louisiana. I had over 650 little scholars and 100 employees. And if you know anything about the New Orleans area in August of 2005, you remember what happened that year in my very first year as a principal. That's right, Hurricane Katrina. And our school year started in a great way, and then it was abruptly ended. And we restarted several weeks later. And at that time, we were very fortunate. Our district did not sustain a direct impact. And because of that, we became a welcoming district to many displaced students and their families. My school took in 100 additional students and additional staff members. And at the time, my greatest challenge was to make that school a safe place, a nurturing place, an inviting place, and a welcoming place for all of our families, but especially our new students. And for me to remind my staff of their purpose as they worried and wondered about having additional students and what would that mean to the school and their small class sizes and would those students feel welcome, we had to go above and beyond. And together, we united as a team. And we said in the face of adversity, we can only do what we've always done, is to be our very best. And that's what we did. And I can tell you without hesitation, that year was one of the most successful years I've had as an administrator, as an educator, because we made those families feel welcome. And more importantly, we made our students know that we loved them, we cared for them, and we welcomed them into our school family. We had a great year. And at the end of the year, I got my staff together and I brought them around us and we all circled up. And I said, guys, we did it. It was a true team effort. And that's the only way we ever accomplish anything. It is together. And because of that, our students were successful, our school was successful, and we are going to continue on this journey. And then I had the nerve to say out loud to my staff that, you know what, I thought turning 40 this year was going to be the toughest thing that I would battle. I didn't know that I would be leading in times of crisis and that we would successfully come out of it. I'm so excited about that. And now I say out loud, whatever life throws my way, I'm up for the challenge. Now, that wasn't very smart of me, for me to challenge life to a battle. Not very smart at all. And two years later, life showed me who was the boss. It turned my world upside down. And I had to fight my way back to the life that I love and I love to live. You see, it was August of 2007 at Meet the Teacher Night on a Monday night as I was welcoming my families back to a new school year, that I felt this short pain in my side. And I said to the people around me, that was pretty intense. I need to get that checked out. On Tuesday, I did get it checked out because Wednesday was the first day of school and I was not going to miss it. I was diagnosed on Tuesday with a simple kidney stone, or so I thought. And I said, oh, I know plenty of people who've had a kidney stone, and so I'm not the least bit concerned. Doctor, please tell me what I need to do so I can get back to opening up school tomorrow. And she said, well, you're going to have a treatment plan and you'll see a specialist on Friday for him to share that with you. And if you have any issues before then, please feel free to call me. I left there feeling very optimistic about what was to happen to me. On Tuesday night, I became so violently ill. I felt like the worst case of the flu ever. And I visited hospital number one, where after many hours of them working on me and trying to figure out what was going on, I was sent home. Before leaving, I asked, was that anyway related, what I'm experiencing to the kidney stone I was diagnosed with? And I was told probably not, but to follow up with my doctor. On Wednesday morning, I thought I would be at the first day of school, but I missed the first day of school. I could not even lift my head off the pillow. I visited hospital number two, where after many hours, they ambulanced me to hospital number three. And at this hospital, I was told I was in critical condition. I was in major organ failure. My kidneys, my lungs, my heart, all shutting down. And then I was later told that I'd be ambulanced to the fourth and final hospital, where there, there would be specialists waiting on me to help figure out my course of treatment. Before exiting the ambulance at the fourth hospital, the last thing I remember hearing before being put into a medically induced coma was the doctor say to the nurses traveling with me that if I'd gotten there just 30 minutes later, he was afraid I would not make it. That's the last thing I heard. That same night, my family was told I had a less than 10% chance of surviving the night. And that if, and I emphasize the word if, I survived the night, my life as I knew it would never again be the same. I was experiencing something called sepsis. My kidney stone had blocked my kidney and an infection was raging throughout my body. As you can see, I was given a less than 10% chance at living, and I turned that into a 100% chance of living. I'm standing before you all today proudly to say that. But I won that battle of surviving. I spent three weeks in the ICU on a ventilator, unable to even breathe on my own. I spent nearly three months in the hospital, fighting my way back. And then I was sent home for a long and arduous, nearly two-year recovery. And at this point, I knew the battle had been won, but the war was still raging. And let me tell you why. This is the part that I didn't share. That sepsis did not leave me unchanged. Because of the treatment needed to save my life, I became a quadruple amputee. I lost both of my hands and my legs below the knee. And I'll tell you this, it was the biggest fight of my life. Life had turned my entire world upside down. But I was okay because I had made it through the battle and ready to fight the war. I kept thinking about what do I do now? And many people expected the tragedy and what happened as a result of the tragedy to be my defining moment, the time that I would say I give up, that I would not wish to keep going on this journey, that I would just try to figure out how to make it day by day and that the tragedy would have me feeling sorry for myself and not wanting to go on. Well, people who really know me, people who really, really know me, know that the tragedy was never going to be my defining moment. No way possible. I decide what my defining moments in life will be. And that defining moment came two years to the date of my illness, when I didn't just walk back into my school as the building principal. No way, I'm a little too extra for that. I danced my way back in, and I have not looked back one day since because my defining moment was in returning to my purpose in life, in finishing something that I had started. And I was just so grateful that my district believed in me and allowed me to return to my role as principal. Now, I could share more of my story with you, but if you're like me and you're a visual learner, what I'd like for you to do is to be able to see my story in full-blown and living color so that you can hear about our story. Allow me to share that with you.
Hearing the words "amputation" the first time was a moment that I don't think I could ever describe it in words, but it was, okay, what are you going to do? Because you don't know anyone who's ever lost a limb, let alone all four. And then what will your life be like? And what will the people in your life have to do? And then immediately, I went to, will I ever be able to be self-sufficient? Or will I always need someone? And then who will that someone be?
The true saint is someone despite adversity, despite all odds, is someone who never gives up hope. And this week's true saint is Marlena Adams. Marlena Adams, the principal of St. Rose Elementary School in St. Charles Parish, is back at work after losing her hands and her legs below the knees due to infections from kidney stones. For two years, Marlena endured numerous surgeries and nearly lost her life. Over time, she learned to walk on prosthetic legs and use her prosthetic hands. Marlena hopes that her story can help motivate others who are struggling through difficult times.
It's just perseverance. And the kids see it, the kids know it. And even in their writings, they've talked about how if Ms. Adams can persevere through what she's been through, I know the problems that I have won't be that bad.
I made that decision on the first day, you know. Once they called me and told me she was sick, that I wasn't gonna leave her side.
I remember it as vividly as I remember anything. He said, I am not going anywhere. We're gonna do this together. I thought about my kids at school and how much I'd always preach about perseverance, never giving up, never saying I can't, and thinking, okay, you've talked the talk, but now you're gonna have to walk the walk.
Marlena Adams is a true educator. She stands for all educators. She has a passion for teaching. Nothing is impossible with Ms. Adams. She takes the "I am" out of impossible and makes it possible. It just makes us all jump on that.
She said that when we did get married, that she wanted to walk down the aisle. She was not going down the aisle to get married in a wheelchair. So at this point, she's back up, she's working, she's back walking, doing whatever she wants to do. So we are getting ready to get planned weddings.
We're gonna make a lot of people very happy on that day because everybody's been part of our story as far as friends, family, and my coworkers, and everybody asks every day, so when are you marrying him? You know, you can't let him go. I'm like, he's not going anywhere. We're gonna work on that. It's definitely in our plan.
He adores her.
Thank you.
She's also a newlywed. In sickness and in health, and with joy and celebration, Marlena's ordeal has been a journey she wouldn't have any other way.
That's what it's about. My life has been filled with possibilities. And upon my return from my illness and my recovery, I wanted people in my school to focus more on my possibilities than my disability. I wanted to show kids that things were possible if we worked hard and stayed committed. And that's what it was about, proving what was possible. Now, you don't come back from the brink of death to thriving in this new life and do it on your own. And that's why that video was so important. And that's why I called it "Our Story." I had a strong support system. People surrounded me and showered me with love and support at every corner, at every turn. And that's how I made it through those difficult times. There goes my message of, we're stronger together. But you saw my biggest support system, right? And it was my husband Tori, whom I'd only dated for a year when this happened. And I shared with him that he needed to commit to this and that's what he chose to do, and that's what he did. And when I said I wanted to return as principal, he didn't ask me, should I or could I? He said, what do I need to do to make that happen? That's the mindset we have to have, everyone. When we want to do things that seem impossible, that we make them possible. And I said, well, you're going to have to help me look the part as a principal, and that means doing my makeup. And he looked at me with the most sincere face and he said, wait a minute, you wear makeup? You see, in that first year, I only let him meet the representative. He didn't know that. And so my reply to him was simply, yes, but it's only to enhance all of this natural beauty, dear. A man who didn't know I wore makeup, didn't know what makeup really was, now had to become a makeup artist. And then I broke the news to him that he would also have to be my hairstylist. And he said, well, you know I do have a bald head for a reason. I didn't feel like dealing with hair. And he said, but I guess I can comb your hair, that would be fine. I said, well, it's a little more detailed than that. You'll be using a flat iron and a blow dryer and then styling it. And he said, what are those? I was a little concerned, but you know what? After many YouTube videos to coach us where we needed to be, I no longer look like Bozo the Clown. And he's gotten to a pretty good place, right? Don't you all agree? You see, it's because we committed to doing what we needed to do to make something possible. And when I returned to school, that's what it was about. I was showing children just by being there that my existence mattered and that my presence would make a difference. And I modeled for them something I'd always preached to them, that they should never give up and not use the word can't. And now I had to walk that talk. I remember my fifth graders, who were there as third graders when I became ill and were now my seniors of the school. They took such good care of me. They were the most empathetic and compassionate children ever. I remember talking to a bunch of them and saying that the little kids, my kindergarten first and second graders, weren't aware of what happened to me. And they didn't even know that I had prosthetic hands and legs, but that I was planning to go to their classrooms and share the story in a very, very loving way. The next day, I was summoned to fifth grade lunch, my favorite place to be, right? But I love being there. And they said, can you come? We have something to share with you. When I got there, the young man who had deemed himself the fifth grade class president, even though he wasn't elected, he said, you know, Ms. Valentine, we want to take care of you. We want to make sure that you're okay. And so yesterday, all of the fifth graders, they gave up their recess and we did something for you. I said, oh, what was that? They said, well, we had a name that limb contest. And I thought for a moment, a what? And they said, a name that limb contest. We're gonna name your limbs so that when you share a story, you'll have the right characters for that story. And I said, okay, so I'm curious, what are the names? And they said, well, your legs, we named Jack and Jill. And I said, oh, that is so amazing. And they said, you're gonna love the names of your hands. We named them Hansel and Gretel. And I said, wow. And without any inkling that it was about to happen, tears just started flowing down my face. And they actually thought they had hurt my feelings. And I said, guys, let's have a little lesson today in something that I call Tears of Joy. Because you guys gave up something that you love and adore, like your recess time, to take care of me. You know what that says to me? I'm in the right place at the right time, doing the right work. And my life from here forward will always be filled with possibilities. You know, what I kept thinking about is what mindset do I need to be able to get through the tragedy, through the recovery, and to become someone that has regained my quality of life and that I'm on the path to doing exactly what I need to do in life, which is to walk in my purpose? Here's the secret, guys. I had to have the right mindset. And I had to be someone that did something I had not done very well before, and that was to embrace change. You see, I was the most hesitant person to change ever. I resisted change. I was a planner, an organizer. I had my life planned out 20 years in advance, and then life happened to me. It gave me Plan B without me even asking for it. And now I had to figure out how I would make it through. I knew that change came in two ways, right? The change we choose, and then what happened to me. Change chose me. And I had no idea how I was going to get through it. That's when I decided that when change chose me, I had to make some tough decisions. Because you see, when we decide we're going to change, it's a little easier. If I want to change my hair color, I do that. If I don't like it, I can just pick another one and do it again. And there are times that I would like to be healthier. Like right now, you know, fighting this quarantine, 15. I keep thinking about, I need to go on a diet. And I start a diet on Monday, and then on Tuesday, I vowed to start again the following Monday. And that's been the cycle that I've been on. And if that's not successful, that change, it's okay because I chose to change and I can just try it again. But when change chose me, I had to just deal with it. I had to learn to embrace it. What good would it do for me to resist this change? Nothing was ever going to be the same again. I would not be regrowing my limbs. And so I had to realize that I needed to embrace this change because resisting it would only set me up for failure. And I was ready to move on with my life. So I made the mindset that in this time, in this space, in this change, that what I would do was to allow the change to transform me into someone better and not someone bitter. I wasn't angry that the change happened. I just said, how am I going to manage this change before it manages me? And in the times that we're in now, isn't this very similar to what we're dealing with? That change happened to us and our world without much warning that it was about to happen? And we have very little control over what the future will hold? But what we can do is learn to embrace all that this change has brought to our lives and to figure out how we're going to come out of this better than when we went into it. And that will happen when we embrace this change together. I remember thinking about how my life professionally was on track to getting back to what it was. But personally, I was struggling because I'm a workaholic. And I remember my husband saying, we need to go out and do something we like to do for fun. And I said, okay, so what do you want to do? And he said, can we just go to the movies? Well, I didn't have the heart to tell someone who had given up everything to become my support system that I don't really like going to movies, that I go to movies for one reason. I bet you all can guess. Yes, I go to movies for the popcorn. Now, as we were traveling to the theater, he saw a worried look on my face and I was still in a wheelchair. I had not yet received Jack or Jill. I only had Hansel and Gretel. And he said, are you okay with going? I said, I'm perfectly fine. The movies are very accessible. That's not my concern. I'm just worried about one thing, and you're gonna think it's pretty silly. He said, what is it? I said, Hansel and Gretel, they don't do finger foods. How will I enjoy my popcorn? The amazing man that he is, he said to me, oh, don't worry about that. I'll feed it to you. And if we were together in the same space, I know that every single one of you would be going, oh, isn't that romantic? Don't fall for that. You know what? After those 30 minutes of previews were done, I never got one kernel of popcorn. My husband became so involved in the movie, he forgot about what he said he would do to give me the popcorn that I needed. And at the end of the movie, we were just glad to be out. But I looked at him and I said, you know what? This didn't really work as well as I thought it would. And he said, I know, I apologize, I'm so sorry. I said, don't. But I tell you what, I'm going to figure out how I can enjoy popcorn for when we return. And what I did is the thing that I use to do everything, this tool that's on my hand, it's called a universal cuff. I put a spoon inside of that, and that's what you see on the screen. It's the day that I returned to the movies with my spoon and tore the top off that bag of popcorn. It's the day that I returned to the movies with my spoon and tore the top off that bag of popcorn. And I ate my popcorn on my own terms. And when I tell you that was an exciting time for me, I finished my bag and some of his. I had him take a picture for my social media. Because I have people following me from all over the world who are always looking to me for inspiration in how to overcome barriers and break down, you know, all those things that seem to be things that I need to do, but they're a barrier in my life. I remember the people behind us whispering like, why are they taking a picture of a lady eating popcorn in the movies? They didn't know my story. And this is the secret. We celebrate the small victories so we have the motivation and the inspiration to get to the big victories. And I'll tell you what, eating that popcorn that day, it got me on track for an even bigger victory as I went through the next phase in my life. What this quote says is that sometimes the things we can't change end up changing us. And that is so true. I didn't know the strength that I had until being strong was my only choice. And in making decisions to embrace this change, it required me to be pushed out of my comfort zone. Someplace that I had not liked to reside in before. And guess what? That's where I learned and grew the most, right outside of my comfort zone. And I started doing things that I didn't even think I could do because I allowed this change to be something that moved me forward. And I kept thinking, I'm becoming someone that I didn't know I was. I had to reintroduce myself to myself and I liked the new me. And the students in my building liked the new me. They liked me so much, they showered me with messages and letters every single day. And it was so humbling to me because I was only there selfishly, doing what I love to do, but at the same time changing lives. I remember getting letter after letter and this one, it meant so much to me. It was from a fifth grader named Catherine. And she wrote me this long letter and I, I put an excerpt from it here. Ms. Valentine returned and something was different. She overcame huge obstacles. And she said, you know, I came back from tragedy. But the amazing thing is that I was exactly the same. And then she went on to note all the things that I did every day that the kids initially thought I would never be able to do. And so she ended her letter by saying, I was actually even better. Now, you can imagine how many tears I shed reading that letter. But what it meant to me was the students recognized how much I sacrificed and I, I was willing to go above and beyond just to ensure that they had the best leader in the building. And they recognized that. And it sent me into a very good place, knowing that my work, it mattered. My presence mattered. My existence mattered. And I remember the youngest child in my building, she also confirmed for me that I was their leader. She was a kindergarten student and she had never been away from home, never left her mother's side. So you know what she did for the first six weeks of school, right? Every single morning. Yes, she had temper tensions and she screamed and cried. And instead of her mom putting her on the bus, she brought her through carpool. So my role after I did my duty in the morning was to walk to the carpool area and to escort her to my office so I could deescalate her, get her to a great place and then walk her to class. And initially that took quite some time. But as the weeks went by, she was more confident and she ended up being able to leave her mother with a shorter amount of time in tears. And then one day, six weeks into the school year, I went to pick her up. And when I got there, she wasn't there. And I said, oh, is my little friend absent today? And they said, you're not going to believe this. She got out of the car, she kissed her mother goodbye and she walked to class on her own. And she never looked back. I found this really quiet place in my building where no one would find me. And I cried that day. I cried big tears because she didn't need me anymore. I grew very attached to our time together and she was letting me know that being with me, it mattered to her. But now I had made her have a successful transition and she became, came the best student in the building in kindergarten. She was so confident and she was so outgoing and I was so proud of her. On the very last day of school, we all go out to tell our children goodbye. And she ran up to me and she grabbed me around Jack and Jill. And she looked up at me with her big brown eyes and she said, Ms. Valentine, I just wanna tell you, you're the best principal I ever had. And she skipped off to her bus. And the tears just started flowing once again. And I thought to myself, you did it. You did it. You're back and the kids know it. And I am so glad that this year went so well. I am so proud of all of us and mostly proud that I could do this. As I started walking back to my office, that's the place where reality usually sets in, I realized that, you heard me say she was in kindergarten, right? She had never had another principal. I taught her the word principal. So who was she comparing me to as the best principal she ever had? No one. But did that matter to me? Absolutely not. I cheered. I still celebrate that moment and I still carry it with me because it was a special time and it confirmed for me that the work that I do, well, it truly does matter. How do you get from a place of nearly dying and, and fighting your way back to getting to where I am today? Thriving in my new life and embracing every obstacle, every hurdle and figuring out how I'll continue to prove what's possible? Well, this is the secret. I choose my attitude. I chose how I would respond to this tragedy and not react to it. And I've decided that choosing my attitude, well, it's been the big, big life changer in my life. Because in the morning, when I'm getting ready, I don't get to choose how my makeup looks or my hair looks. Or right now, even what I get to wear, cuz my husband even stepped up as a fashion consultant. He even picks out accessories, but that's okay with me. Because he does that work, I get to work on the most challenging thing you need to do every morning when you're getting ready. And that is to choose the attitude, the mindset that you're going to take with you throughout the day. And I choose to have a great attitude, to have a positive attitude, to know that I only have good days. There are tough moments that happen during the day, but I make sure they stay a moment, a little section of time. And they don't become my life sentence. Absolutely not. And when I say I only have good days, it's because I've made that decision to only have good days. Now, when we're facing tough times and when tragedy seems to happen and adversity is in our face and life is challenging us and giving us plan B, what do we need to do? We have to decide that we're going to respond in a way that allows us to stay in control, to focus on the things we can control and to know that having the right attitude, well, it's contagious. I used to say, as the principal, if I sneeze, the entire building will catch a cold. That's because I know that my attitude, my leadership, it impacts everyone in the building. And so I had to arrive there every day as excited on Monday morning as I was on Friday afternoon. If I want enthusiastic lifelong learners and excited and enthusiastic faculty and staff, then I had to be that kind of leader. And it's the same for all of you. If you want the students in your district to excel and to come back to school ready and up for the challenges, just excited about learning, that's what you have to do. You have to wake up every day choosing your attitude and not allowing anything or anyone take you off course from having the best day ever. I say every day, bring your very best, your very best to the building. That's what our children deserve. And I know you're up for the challenge. I already know this. And I'm so excited that you'll get an opportunity to be able to choose your attitude and how you're going to embrace the times that we're in and how you're going to move forward together, united. And it's going to be a game changer in how this year will go. No matter what way or what space we're in, you're going to be able to endure, overcome and take life on and be successful. Choose the right attitude and how you're going to move forward. You know, one of the big things that was a huge success, um, successful part of my leadership was that I worked on climate and culture intentionally and deliberately. Now, climate could change in an instant depending on what was happening in the building or decisions that were made that may not have been popular. And I realized that that could fluctuate, but the culture, it was deep. And it was something I really worked on with my leadership team and with every faculty and staff member and all stakeholders. Our culture was one of excellence and consistency. And we ensured that students were successful. We took care of our scholars and we made certain that their families were part of our unit, our family unit. That culture was something we built and we didn't allow it to fluctuate from year to year. Things happened, but our culture was so, so strong and in our district, it was so strong that we were able to maintain, sustain and create even better cultures each year. I keep thinking about the abrupt ending to our last school year and how that pivot had to happen so quickly. Many of us went online and distance learning happened in, and over a weekend, maybe even in a day. And we somehow rose to the challenge, didn't we? Because we know how important our work is to our most precious gifts, our children, and that our families were counting on us. And finally, people all over this world have seen what educators have always been about. And that is being resilient, being game changers and being compassionate and loving about what they do. And I'm so glad everyone now knows this. And I think about what do we do in this new space, in this new school year that also works to building and building upon the culture that's already evident? And how are we going to maintain that if we're beginning the year virtually? How do we continue to build a positive climate that supports students even though they may not be under our roof? We have to figure that out. This has to be deliberate and intentional. And I know the leaders of your district and of your schools, as well as every faculty and staff member, you're all thinking about this. What are the ways you're going to reach out to students and their families? Even before the year begins to let them know we're in this together and we're going to make it through this together. I am confident that your culture will remain strong and that it will even get stronger as the year progresses. Because everyone's united and wanting us to be successful. I keep thinking about the mindset that made our school and our district so successful. And it was this, that we were all in. That meant every person, no matter what role or capacity they played in our organization, in our district, in our schools, it mattered and they mattered. And so they had to have an all in mentality, that they were going to go above and beyond because our students' lives were at stake. And we preached this message every opportunity we got. I made sure everyone knew to be all in means going above and beyond, no excuses. We're not letting anything stop us from achieving our goals and letting our students reach their fullest potential. But it also means this, that all means all. That means every student, every day matters. Every student, every moment counts. And so we have got to embrace all of our children, regardless of anything they bring to our schools and embrace them in a way that we celebrate them and their diversity and their diverse needs and not just tolerate them. We're here for our children. Their needs come first. And that's what makes us such successful educators because we put the needs of our students first. And I am confident that in this time, you have done this. You have done this as you abruptly ended your school year and had to pivot to virtual learning. You took care of every student. You ensured they had what they needed, whether it be a meal or a techno- technology or a device or support or whatever was needed to that family to be able to make it through the tough times. You've been there all summer for them. I know you're reaching out to them and keeping the communication lines open and having two-way communications to let them know that what they share with you, their input is valuable. And we're going to ensure together that we meet our students' needs in the new school year. And that together is the only way we will make it through. Remember this if you remember nothing about today. We are stronger together. We are collectively going to believe that our students' lives will be enhanced. They will be better because they've had us as their educators. And we have to believe this if we're going to move forward and make things what we know they should be for our children and for every family that trusts us with their children. And I am confident that your district is going to do their very best. What was the foundation of everything that we did in our school in building our culture? Relationships. Relationships were key. And I was a leader that knew every student, not just by face and by name. I knew all six hundred and fifty of my students. Within the first three weeks of school, I could call them by name and I could also tell you things about them. I got to know my students as a teacher. And so when I became an administrator, I knew that was a powerful part of my success. And so I learned about my children. What were their likes? What were their dislikes? What interested them? What motivated them? And then when times got tough for those children, I was able to bring them back to a place of happiness, to let them know I genuinely cared about them and their well-being. That's what building relationships does. It makes us more successful because kids know we care and then they begin to care. And I'm thinking about ways that you need to be working right now to build those relationships. Are you reaching out to the families? Are you contacting your students? Are teachers reaching out to the children they will have this school year? And making those connections, even virtually, by telephone, by email? But find a way to connect to those families, to connect to those students. And don't leave this part out. Build the relationships in your schools and across your district. What are ways that we can connect as adults to make sure that we're in a good space and that we're ready and up for the challenge just to say hello to each other? Host a game night, do whatever is needed virtually to prepare ourselves for what's ahead. And the biggest thing that you can do right now is to figure out together how you're going to build relationships that some of them ended in a way they were not used to. The school year didn't end the way it was supposed to. And you didn't get to say goodbye and get the excitement of a new school year to build and to see those faces on the first day, walk through your building, to give them a hug, a high five, a handshake. All of that might be different, but there's still a way for you to make those meaningful relationships happen. And I am confident that you will figure that out. I know that we will because as educators, it's that important to us that we let our families know that we appreciate them trusting us with their children. It's going to happen. I keep thinking, I am so aligned with this quote by Josh Ship. That every child is one caring adult away from being a success story. And I embodied that and I embraced that and I use it. I have it taped to my computer until this day. Because I did not say that every child is one caring teacher away or one caring principal away. I said, one caring adult. And that means anyone can impact the life of a child. You just need to have the right heart for this work that we do. And caring adults were all over my building, all over my district, as I know they are in your district. The caring adults that are needed to bring our children through these times and to carry each other through these times, they're here. And we have got to remember the power that we each possess in this time as educators. You know, we could be the reason that a child becomes a success story and not a statistic. That's a huge responsibility. We're not the only factor, but we could be the difference. Not just want to make a difference, but we could be the difference. I'm a firm believer in instilling in children that they can do anything they put their minds to doing. I believe that our zip code should not determine our level of success. And our situation right now, our current situation will never be our final destination. Our demographics don't determine our destiny. And so we have to be of the mindset that we're going to be that adult for all of our students. It only takes one person to change the trajectory of a child's life forever. You see, I don't know how far into the future my impact and influence will ripple. It can go on for generations because I desire and I work to be that unforgettable educator for my students. And I know you will too. Your district is filled with caring educators, caring adults. And I know every student will be successful because of that. I want us to remember how important our role is in being merchants of hope. And especially in these times, all of us need to remember how hope has to be our anchor to get through tough times. We have to hold on to hope. And in doing that, we have to plant the seeds of hope into our students. I believe every one of us in this entire world has suffered some level of trauma by what is happening right now in our world. And so our students are in a space where they're going to need us because many of them may have become hopeless. And it's up to us to plant the seeds of hope, to let them know how much we care about them, how much we believe in them. And in planting those seeds, we may not actually see them fully bloom in the time that we have our children. We may not get to reap the fruits of our labor, but I promise you that those seeds that you plant today, they will bloom and they will stay with these children forever. They will never forget us. And I keep thinking about how much we need to say this year and every year to our children, "I believe in you." But we really have to mean it because kids can see when we're not being sincere. And I said it so much, I remember this one fourth grader. He was pretty hopeless. He had had many failures throughout life and had a very tough life and so for him, he was very hopeless. And I used to tell him all the time, "I believe in you. I know you can do it." And one day he looked at me and he said, "I don't know why you believe in me so much. I don't even believe in myself." And I said, "Well, we're gonna change that. How about this? Why don't you borrow some of my belief in you until you can believe in yourself? I have that much belief in you that I can give some away and still have plenty." He smiled at me and he said, "I'll take it, Ms. Valentine. I'll take it." Our children need us to remind them of how amazing they are. I want to leave you with this final story of the student that has changed my life. You know how we set out as educators to change the lives of our students and that's our ultimate goal? That we set them up for success and that they become these amazing adults who give back and are just incredible to the world? Well, this is my story of a student that changed my life. And without me even knowing it, she will remain with me forever. Let me introduce you to Ashley. Ashley was my second grade student in one of my first years of teaching. And she was a student who came to school every single day, ready for a battle, ready for a power struggle. Ashley had a very tough life and I knew that because I got to know her family very well. I build relationships, not just with my students, but their families. And I got to know Ashley very well because pretty much she had to spend her recess and her lunch period and after school with me doing the work that she didn't do when she was supposed to. And she wanted to be in that time with me because she liked the one-on-one attention, but more than that, she needed it. And I held my students accountable. I remember bringing her home that very first time with permission from her guardian. And I met her grandmother and she shared some information with me. And I learned a lot about why Ashley came to school in that mindset. She said Ashley's father, she didn't know him, and that her mother was incarcerated and that her siblings were all spread out amongst different relatives because no one would take all four of them. Her brothers were somewhere else, each in a different home, and that she resided with grandmother. And so she was angry. She was angry that her life was not what she thought it should be and that's why she came to school angry. But let me tell you what I didn't do. I didn't let her situation determine how much I would hold her accountable for the greatness she had inside of her. I was not accepting less than her very best and she knew that and I did it from a place of love. And I nurtured her and I gave her the positive support that she needed. I worked with grandmother and she successfully made it through my class. And as a third grader, she moved on to our feeder school and I said goodbye to her with tear-filled eyes because I knew I would miss her. She was at a new school and I didn't do what many people expected me to do, which is to warn the new school that she was coming. I like every child to get a fresh start and for people to form their own opinions. I did share things that motivated her and things that might help support her, but that is it. After that year, I became an administrator and my superintendent told me that I would be able to work with students that I knew. And I thought I was gonna stay at the school where I was a teacher. And he said, "Oh, no, you misunderstood me. You'll be going to your feeder school as the assistant principal." And I said, "Great. I know all the families. I know the students. It's gonna be amazing." I sort of forgot that Ashley would maybe still be there. On the very first day of my assistant principalship, the first child off the bus was Ashley. She ran over to me. She gave me a big hug and she said, "I heard you were coming and I heard you're gonna be the disciplinarian." And you'll see me a lot because I'm still a discipline problem. And I thought to myself, why would this fourth grader think that I was gonna accept that of her? I said, "I'm not just a disciplinarian. I do many things and you are not a discipline problem. We're going to make this your best year ever." And that was my mission that year, to turn her thoughts around. She had the best teachers in the world. Everyone supported her. She struggled at times, but we were doing pretty good. And on those tough days, I spent time building her up and reminding her of the greatness inside of her. One day she got off the bus as excited as I've ever seen her and she said, "Can I share something with you?" And I said, "Sure, what is it?" And she said, "Well, I learned last night that my mom is finally getting out of jail and I'm so excited." And I said, "Oh, my goodness. I'm so excited. That is amazing." She said, "We're all gonna be a family again and guess what? I finally get to have my own bed." And it took me a moment to process. She didn't say my own room because many of us share rooms with our siblings. She said her own bed. He was a ten-year-old child that had never slept in her own bed, never had a bed. She said, "I've always slept on the couch or on a bunch of comforters on the floor and now I'll actually have my own bed." And I said, "Well, I'll tell you what. Whatever design you want in your room, whatever decorations you want, I've got you. We're gonna make it extra special." We had the best two weeks with Ashley ever. She was the most amazing students. Her teachers were ecstatic. I was ecstatic. Everyone noticed. And it was because for the first time in her life, she had hope of having some sense of normalcy in her life. Well, a day or two later, she missed school. Her teachers called down frantic, "Hey, can you call home? Ashley's not here." And I said, "Guys, it's one day. Why don't call home when kids miss one day?" And they said, "You have to know something's wrong." Ashley comes to school every day. She's had perfect attendance since kindergarten. She comes with pink eye, the flu. It doesn't matter. She's at school. And I said, "You're right. Let me call home and check." And I did and grandmother answered the phone and I could tell by the sound of her voice that something was very wrong. And I said, "Hey, we're just checking in on our Ashley, making sure everything's okay because she never misses school." And she said, "Well, I'm glad you called because everything is not okay." And I said, "You know, you don't have to share anything. We were just checking in." She said, "Oh, no. I wanna share it with you. I know you want to know this." You see, last night Ashley got the worst news ever. We all did. I said, "Okay." And she said, "Last night she found out that her mother passed away in jail and she won't be coming home and they won't be a family." And I thought to myself, it took a lot for me to even reply. And I said, "Oh, I'm so sorry. If there's anything that we can do, anything at all, please don't hesitate to call." Grandmother said, "I'm keeping her home today because I'm trying to help her through this. She's very upset." And I said, "Okay, just let us know if you need anything." About two hours later, I was at lunch duty and they called and said, "Would you like to come up to the office? There's a visitor." Well, leaving lunch duty, yes, I'm on my way. And when I got up there, I saw grandmother and Ashley. And she gave me the biggest hug and she ran over and grandmother said, "You know, I tried to keep her home, but she said I have to go to school. I have to go see Ms. Valentine because guess what? I know she loves me and she wants to be there for me. I have to go to school. My teachers need to know what happened." I said, "You know, we're honored that this is a place, a safe place for her, a place of love. Please leave her here. We'll take good care of her." We poured into her. I called in her teachers and the counselor and everyone just came in to make sure she felt loved that day. I helped her write a poem for her mother to read at the services and then I said to her, "I'll be there to see you do it. I can't wait." And she said, "You're coming to the services?" I said, "We wouldn't miss it. We have to support you. I know it's gonna be a tough day, but we'll be there." When I arrived at the services, Ashley saw me and her eyes got big as saucers and she said, "Come up here, come up here." And I went up to express my condolences and Ashley scooted over on that front bench. And I said, "Oh, no." She said, "Can you sit here?" And I said, "Oh, no, sweetie. This is for family. I'll be a few rows back, but I'm going to be here and I'll give you a hug after it's done." And she said, "Please sit here, please." Grandmother heard us having this conversation back and forth and grandmother looked at me as she always did. And she said, "Ms. Valentine, if you're not family, I don't know who is. Sit down." And I did. I sat on the front row greeting everyone, expressing my sympathy to everyone in the family and getting to know everyone in her family. I watched her read that poem with tear-filled eyes. I was so proud of her for being strong enough to do that. And when the services ended, we hugged and embraced and I told her that I would always be there for her. When she did return to school, we did have a rough end of the year. Understandably, she was extremely angry and very upset, but we worked with her, we supported her, and we loved her because you know love can be a game changer. I was moved from that school the following year and Ashley moved on to another school and I lost touch with her for a few years. And then one day when I was principal in my school, I received a letter from Ashley, a high school student. And it began with, "I want to thank you for being a teacher and someone that loves me, that has always loved me and I appreciate everything you've done to me, for me, but my life is just not worth living. I, I don't think I even matter on this earth and I've suffered sexual abuse, physical abuse, mental abuse, all at the hands of my people that are supposed to protect me, my family. And, and I just don't think it's worth living, but thank you for always being there for me." Well, you know that letter was a cry for help and I sprang into action. I found Ashley. I found grandmother. I didn't stop until I notified everybody that needed to be notified that this child was crying out for help. But I wrote her a letter that moment and I asked grandmother, "Could I come and see her and deliver it?" And she said, "Absolutely." I went over there and she was so excited to see me. I handed her the letter and I said, "I want you to read this before we talk." And I began with, "Dear Ashley, your life matters. It matters to me. The world will be a better place because of all you're going to do in the future and you're going to overcome things and be a model for so many others of how you do that." And I went on to tell her all the great things about herself. We cried, we talked, we laughed for nearly two hours and I told her, "Here's my personal cell number. Call me if you need anything." I kept in touch with her as much as I could. She bounced from house to house and then I lost track of her for a few years. I was in my school as principal at lunch duty once again when my secretary called and said, "Ms. Valentine, there's a visitor in the front. Would you like to come up?" I said, "Out of lunch duty? Yes." And I went up there. Guess who was in the front office? Ashley. And next to Ashley was her three-year-old daughter, the most beautiful little girl ever. She looked just like Ashley when she was, you know, a young child in my classroom. And we hugged and embraced and we talked and she said, "I just had to come here to say thank you in person for always believing in me, for giving me hope and for helping me through really tough times. I'm about to move. You always told me to dream bigger than my zip code where I'm moving to another state with a family member that loves me and wants me. I've got a job. I'm getting my own apartment and I'm going to school. And I'm gonna make a better life for my daughter than I had. And I only hope and wish and dream that she will one day have a teacher that's just like you who doesn't give up on kids and who will stay in her life forever, just like you have done for me." And we cried once again and hugged and then Ashley said to me, "There's one more thing I wanna tell you before we leave." She said, "You know that weekend when you came to see me and you brought that letter?" I said, "Absolutely. I remember that time. I remember all of what we shared." She said, "Well, there's one thing I didn't share with you. That next day, that Saturday after you visited me on Friday, I had a plan to kill myself. Everything was in place." I'd already written all the letters to say goodbye, but because you came, because you shared with me how much I meant to you, that there was one person in this world that still loved me and believed there was good inside of me, I didn't do it. I couldn't do it. So she said, "I came here to tell you, thank you for saving my life." Well, I still get choked up right now just thinking about it because it means that much to me. As an educator, we don't know where our Ashleys will be, when they will come into our careers and into our lives. And that every student takes a little bit of what we put inside of them and carries it with them forever. This child reminded me of the power that I have, the impact and influence that I had as an educator and as a passionate educator who loved unconditionally. And she reminded me of my why. Ashley is someone I carry with me every single day. And in knowing that, not only did I make her life better, not only did I help her see things differently, but she said to me that I saved her life and that will forever stay with me. I recently met her daughter who is a first grader now and I'm so excited because this little girl has such a great personality and a bright future. And I actually read to her class and didn't know she was in there. And when I walked in, she said, "I know you. I know you." And I said, "Okay." And she said, "You are my mom's best friend." And I said, "Who's your mom?" And when she said Ashley, all I could do was smile and say, "Please let her know that we have met." And I'm so glad that you're in a great school doing great things. You see, our life can be a full circle when we get to see the fruits of our labor, when we see the seeds of hope that we planted actually bloom. And I got to see that and I get to hear it from hundreds of students all the time, but this child I will carry with me forever. I can only hope that you remember this story as you encounter tough times and you start to lose track of why you do what you do. Remember the power and the influence and impact that you have, each and every one of you, no ma- matter what role you play in the lives of our students. Today I wanted to invite you on Mission Possible. I took you on this journey with me. And what I say to you is, as the new year arrives and as you're making plans for what's going to happen without knowing certainly what will happen and what's to come, let's remember to believe in what's possible, to know that we're stronger together, that having a positive attitude and a positive outlook about it all and not reacting to change and thinking of it as a bad thing, but embracing it and seeing how it can transform you, to make you better, to make us grow together and realizing the power we have collectively to change the world, to save lives. Please join me on Mission Possible. It's been my honor and privilege to be here with all of you. I'm Merlina Valentine. I will forever be a lifelong educator. I retired in two thousand sixteen as the executive director. But I will always call myself an educator because I'm still out here doing the work that impacts schools, that makes a difference in the lives of children and that reminds you that you are the most important person in a child's life when they are entrusted to your care by their parents. Thank you for the work that you do and I wish you all a sincere, great year and a very successful year. Thank you.